Let's call this regular monthly board meeting to order at this time Tuesday, June the 24th, 6:00 PM. You all for our prayer of course, Superintendent Voeche.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the ability to gather together this evening in order to make sound decisions for our school district, guide us in our work, and help us to come together in the best interests of our children, be with those students who are completing state testing this week, and help them feel confident in their efforts. Also, we ask that you continue to watch over all of our school board family as the summer break continues. These things we ask in your name.
Mr. Campbell, would you lead us into pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Superintendent Voeche, would you call the rollers?
Mrs. Acevedo?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mrs. DeFatta?
Here.
Mr. Egan?
Here.
Mr. England?
Here.
Mrs. Dyssart?
Here.
Dr. Kraft?
Here.
Dr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Nikosia?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Voeche. At this time, we want to recognize some guests in the audience from Our Lady of Holy Cross College in the Department of Education, Ms. Melinda Carney, Ms. Kathy Elvy.
Elzy.
Elvy?
Elzy.
Elvy, okay, okay, I got the Z left out, but we welcome you here and we wish you the best as you continue your pursuit in education. Thank you for being here. And also, Ms. Carla Short, you're with us?
Okay.
All right, thank you, thank you for being with us.
Our Lady of Holy Cross.
All of you from Our Lady of Holy Cross, across the river, okay. We wish you the best. I want to recognize Ms. Dyssart, who has something to say.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Kraft. I would like to request a moment of silence for Ms. Catherine Thornton, who passed away this week. Ms. Thornton was a longtime educator and principal at Carolyn Park. She gave over thirty-something years to St. Bernard Parish Schools and touched the lives of many, many of our young people. So, a moment of silence, please.
Thank you, and our deepest condolences on behalf of the board go out to Ms. Thornton's entire family. Also, I'd like to take another point of privilege, on a happier note, we had a birthday on this board, Dr. Kraft had a birthday yesterday, happy birthday, Dr. Kraft.
Yesterday? And that's three-quarters of a century, if you want to do the math.
Happy birthday.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. I had a nice, quiet day last night, we had dinner with the families, so that culminated the end of a day, so it really wasn't that bad. I thought it'd be really a change and I'd just deflate like a balloon, reaching seventy-five, but it really didn't, so I'm optimistic for the future. That hundred doesn't look too bad now.
Well, happy birthday, Dr. Kraft. Every birthday is a good birthday, right?
Absolutely.
And I have one more point of privilege, if I could. On behalf of the board, we'd like to congratulate Ms. Doris Voeche, who is now the president of the State Superintendent's Association. We're very proud of her.
They shouldn't have had a better time.
And we know that her leadership is going to be great.
It depends on your point of view.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I just wanted to comment on, you know, on the passing of Catherine Thornton. When we talk about a career educator here in St. Bernard, there's no finer person than Catherine Thornton was. She was, for many years, a teacher and a counselor at Tris Middle School, and then moved to the principalship, as Ms. Dyssart said, of Carolyn Park Elementary School, and that's where I got to know her well, because I was in this, I moved to the central office at the time, she was the principal of that elementary school, and I did many observations there, and we got to be, you know, we got to be friends, as well as colleagues. And then, when we did the consolidation process, as you well know, and closed schools and changed the pattern of schools, she became the principal of Araby Elementary, which was, at that time, at the site of the old Araby Park Middle School. And Frank Alder was superintendent at the time, and I was the assistant superintendent, and as we made those decisions as to who was going to go where, we knew that Ms. Thornton was the person who could bring many different faculties together there at the new Araby Elementary School. And once she retired, she did not leave the school system. Her children went through our schools, and her grandchildren are currently in our schools. Some grandsons at Chalmers High, and a little granddaughter at Davies', and Ms. Thornton was a grandmother volunteer every day this past school year, basically, at Davies Elementary School. So, she was a tremendous educator, who gave her entire life to the pursuit of education and to the welfare of the children here in St. Bernard Parish. So, I just wanted to kind of elaborate a little bit on that, because we lost a great educator and friend with Ms. Thornton's passing.
Thank you, Ms. Voeche. She was a great person, she served many years and retired. In fact, the granddaughter we're talking about, which is about five, I was spending the summer with her, and when she had the massive heart attack, thank goodness her sister was there with her, our little ally would have been there by herself with Mrs. Thornton. So, we offer the condolences to the two daughters, and the son, and the granddaughter in the passing of Ms. Thornton. So, at this point, do we have anyone for community concerns, Ms. Penizak? Okay, then we'll move the agenda on to item five, motion to incorporate the report of the June General Committee meeting into the minutes of the June regular monthly meeting. A move by Mr. Long, seconded by Ms. Acevedo. Any questions relative to this? Here are non-Voeche machines.
Motion passes eleven zero.
Item six, request from Wildlife and Fisheries to conduct terrapin study on sixteen section land. There was no recommendation from the committee, but they are here to give us some information relative to that for the disposition of the board. Mr. Arlington?
Yes, sir, thank you, good evening. We had a request from the Louisiana Department of Wildlife and Fisheries to access our sixteen section land to conduct a study of the Diamondback Terrapin. Tonight, we have Mr. John Weave from the Louisiana Department of Fisheries and Mrs. Stephen Pearson as well, and they have a little presentation they would like to give to the board to let us know exactly what they plan to do.
I'll let you all get settled. Thank you all for the opportunity to come out here and talk to you about a project that, well, Steve and I and our program have been working very hard on with our collaborators, that being our Office of Fisheries Brethren. This is an examination of Diamondback Terrapin, which is a turtle species that inhabits salient environments, like we have here in St. Bernard and throughout the coast, and it's to get an idea about the abundance and distribution of this terrapin. This work in principle was tied to the state seeking sustainability certification for the blue crab fisheries. As has been demonstrated in the species range, there have been some negative impacts associated with principally derelict crab pots and them being caught in that. So, Office of Fisheries is trying to be very proactive about that, so first and foremost, is trying to find out how many we have and where they are located, as well as trying to identify factors that might be influencing their survival, as well as trying to identify areas where they're making positive gains in the population, that being reproduction. So, we're going to run through some of those, and if you all have questions, please don't hesitate to ask. So, again, Diamondback Terrapin is found throughout the eastern seaboard, as well as the Gulf Coast and lower South Florida. For this conversation, we're principally interested in Louisiana, and they're inhabiting intact salt marsh and shallow bays, nesting in Upland Beach habitat, sometimes near vegetated dunes as well. Louisiana is of interest on multiple fronts, because they've got the most available tidal shoreline of all the Gulf Coast states, which makes us an even more intriguing and also difficult way to examine the species, because as everyone in this room is familiar, trying to navigate around this state and trying to find every nook and bayou is pretty difficult. But we're doing our best. Our project objectives are threefold. One is to estimate terrapin abundance and distribution throughout coastal Louisiana. Our project collaborator is Dr. Will Selman out of the Rockefeller Refuge, who handles the areas from freshwater bayou west to Zavine Pass, and so we're handling everything from Vermillion all the way up to y'all's neck of the woods. Also, evaluate individual terrapin population demographics. And then, third, is to document nesting ecology and associated reproductive productivity across the state. Prior to this work, as well as from our collaborator, Dr. Selman, which started in 2010, there was only two hundred known observations of these animals over the past hundred years. So, we had to really start from scratch, trying to identify where we would go. We utilized a lot of our historical information from fisheries, museum specimens, incidental observations, and then we also utilized the, our knowledge of what this species utilizes as far as habitat preferences, so we looked at things like salinity regimes, vegetation types, and also presence of nesting beaches, because they are, they are known to be fairly sightfidelic when it comes to nesting. And so, from that, we came up with this visual map, for lack of better words, that highlights where all of these animals were located. And so, from that, we set out to have an initial evaluation of terrapin throughout the coast. But prior to that, you know, once, once we were able to identify that, we really needed to engage our private coastal landowners, because it's important to us on multiple fronts, obviously, one, eighty percent of the coast is privately owned, number two, and more importantly, in my opinion, these land, these same landowners have institutional knowledge, it's very important to us as far as how these habitats have changed. And they also, in these collaborations, they really opened us up to meet a lot of different people that we never would have interacted with prior to, that have given us a lot of historical knowledge about terrapin in these areas, which has been, which has been very fruitful even to this day. So, that's just a listing of who we're, who we're working with right now for, for the group. We've also been contacting a number of folks within the St. Bernard area, like the Miro Foundation and a few others, and they've also expressed interest in working, working with us as well. So, we've had that, as well as working with Biloxi Marsh Lands Corporation and Lake Eugenie. And for this area as well, probably Terrabuff is probably very familiar to the audience as well. So, our abundance and distribution goes using the FIC net that you're seeing right there. Every animal that's captured is identified twice. The first method is just notching the shell, and the second is where we put a little pit tag inside of them that gives them a unique identification. And then, we also take some standard measurements, like you can see going on right there. The measurements bring out certain things for evaluating the population. Males and females are known to be sexually diamorphic by size, males are smaller than females. So, that's one of the, one of the ways that we've been evaluating that.
It's one species.
So, this is sort of an overview of the sites that we went to. It was sort of a shotgun methodology, trying to utilize the information that we had, as well as also looking at the habitat preferences for the species. The areas that are highlighted in yellow are the areas where we had our highest catch, and as you can see over there, redfish, Bay Seawat, Terrabuff, and Eugenie. One of the things that I want to mention with Lake Eugenie property is those numbers are a little deceiving, because it took us a while to get our land access agreement mapped out with Biloxi. So, we didn't have as much time to evaluate that property as we had with the others. So, from, from those twenty-four samples that we looked at, we were successful at eighteen for a total capture of two-hundred-and-sixteen with our max, max per successful, uh, I don't know, max per successful site of sixty-one, which is East Grand Terre in the Barataria region. And that's just sort of a spatial way of looking at that. So, from, from, from those data, we were able to identify, as was highlighted in that table, six principal locations that we would be sampling to more, to evaluate these populations more in depth. And we also intensified our sampling, because we, we were normally trapping with six traps per site, and we increased that to twelve. The idea is with more traps, you have a greater chance of catching, and principally important for understanding the size and the demographics of these populations is trapping animals over time, and having, and having a sense of how, you know, the survival, reproduction, what have you, that's going on in these various populations. And so, that highlights the principal areas that we're, that we're looking at working in, which certainly involves St. Bernard Parish, as well as regions in Barataria, Terrabone, and like I mentioned, towards the west, beyond freshwater bayou to Zavine Pass, is our collaborator, Dr. Selman out of Rockefeller Refuge. To date, for 2014, our captures have done, we've done significantly more than was accomplished in early 2013. Our recapture rate in some of these areas is as high as eighteen percent, which we're really excited about that, that again, being in the East Grand Terre area. Beyond that, for most of the areas, is running a respectable four to five percent. And these recapture rates, again, will, are helping us have more, are bolstering our confidence, for lack of better words, in talking about the overall populations that we have here in the state. So, moving into the next phase of that is going to be terrapin nesting ecology. We have interest in identifying and delineating nesting beaches for this particular species, because it gives us a sense of how many eggs they're putting in, as well as also getting an understanding of their hatch rates and their overall survivability. Again, very important when we're, when we're trying to talk about population dynamics. And so, from that, we've been able to characterize things like where these nests are located, what direction they're going in, nest depth and clutch size, all of which is taking us a long time to figure out, again, two-hundred observations in a hundred years, there weren't a lot of people that we could talk to to figure out a lot of this basic biology and ecology, so we had to take some baby steps to figure some of this out. But indeed, a lot of that is helping us for the work that we're doing onward. And from a lot of that work, we found for last season, eighty total nests with a high, with a fairly high rate of depredation, around eighty-six percent, which falls well within the range of the, of the published literature, and a host of usual suspects that go around acting as, for eggs, you ghost crabs, your raccoons, your otters, and your coyotes. And this year, we've had, we've intensified our trapping in St. Bernard, in the areas that I was talking with, principally in the Lake Eugenie properties, as well as Biloxi Marsh Land Corporation. And that will give you sort of a visual on where we were located, and this is one of the areas, this was the first time that we really were able to spend time out in, in St. Bernard and these areas. The logistics, as you guys well know, to get out to these areas are, are pretty difficult, and we've, so we had to sort of mount a substantive effort to get enough folks and boats out there to make a representative effort, and indeed, I think that we did. But just to give you guys an idea of what we're looking for, so that's a terrapin nest right there. And probably, you could easily walk over that, but that's where, those are the same eggs that are coming out of that, it's some of our folks evaluating. So, again, it's, it's very much a learning curve, I'm sure you guys see a lot of shell beaches when you're out fishing and what have you, but that's the type of habitat that we're looking at for, for some of these areas. And just to give you guys sort of our initial impressions on what we saw, we went to seventeen different locations, we found terrapin nesting within five of those seventeen, and found a fair number of intact nests, of which we can go through and evaluate number of eggs, and delineate those types of habitats for being able to go back at later points and characterize hatchability, survivability, that type thing. But again, starting off slow, there's a lot of territory, a lot of coastline to cover, so it's taking us a while to do that, and we're looking for more areas within the St. Bernard area that we can examine these animals in more detail. So, starting in 2012, we've been documenting terrapin with our collaborator, Dr. Selman, along the coastline. The data that we have to date, which is, is close to two years, suggests potential regional differences in terrapin distribution and abundance. We've been evaluating six principal locations, our group, six principal locations among the Biloxi Marsh area, as well as Barataria, Terrabone, and we're also continuing doing a lot more of our nesting ecology and reproductive work, going on in the Grand Isle complex, as well as in Terrabone, and as I talked about, St. Bernard Parish. The Diamondback Terrapin across its range continues to be impacted by a host of environmental and man-made sources that leads to things that I know many of these, many of our audience members, as well as board members are familiar with, habitat loss, habitat degradation, and like I mentioned previously, fisheries bycatch with derelict fishing gear. Certainly, we think that significant gains have been made in our understanding of the species to date, however, we think that it's very important, and we've been telling that to our Fisheries Brethren as well, is that we've, we've only been evaluating these animals since 2012, and last I checked, the coastline in Louisiana changes on a fairly regular basis, so we need to be cautious about what we see. Moving onward, we want to continue doing more of our individual population dynamics, where we're going out, we're trapping our animals on a regular basis in this, in principally in the springtime, trying to characterize these populations in more detail. We already also have, again, with Dr. Selman, we're taking tail snips off each one of those animals, and we're working out population genetics. We have now, I believe, in the neighborhood of five to six hundred samples that are being analyzed, and certainly, from this year's efforts, we have a lot more to go into more detail about what's going on with these populations. We've evaluated bycatch in some of the closure areas, and certainly have interest in exploring that within St. Bernard, I think that would be an area of interest for not just us, but for other collaborators that we have. And what brought us to this conversation in the first place is delineating and evaluating additional habitat that we think terrapin would be utilizing, like Section sixteen that we've been talking about with you folks today. And want to acknowledge, obviously, our principal collaborator, Dr. Selman, and our funding sources, Wildlife and Fisheries, Office of Fisheries, and the State Wildlife Grant 217. Also, want to acknowledge all of our coastal property owners and managers, as well as the Louisiana Landowners Association, which has been instrumental in getting all of this off the ground as far as pairing us up with landowners that were interested in helping us with this project. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, Mr. Long?
Apparently, this, this species of turtles are not the turtles that were involved with the Teds from the TED legislation.
No, that would be sea turtles, sir.
Okay, okay.
There are, and it's, and it's within Wildlife and Fisheries regs for crab gear, that there are excluder devices, excluder rings on your crab pots at that point. And there's, but as far as the TED work that you're talking about, that would be sea turtles.
Okay. And my second question, I guess, is from Ms. Voeche, I'm sure that if we allow them to use our land, we'll have them sign like a whole harmless in case someone gets hurt while...
Yes, sir. Could you just explain a little bit exactly what you would like to do? In other words, bring teams of people on, be a little definitive on what would happen as you go into it.
We have, we have two, two areas in principle that we'd be working on. One would be the trapping with the FIC nets that are there, and we go through principally in the springtime for that, it's all catch and release at that point. And then, come late May into July, maybe August at that point, we would be going on those, those areas, trying to delineate nesting beaches, and then going through and opening nests and counting eggs and trying to get some sense of nesting ecology. There's also, in certain areas, we'd like to go through and cage some of those nests so that we can go through and follow that all the way through their hatching, so that we get an idea of not just their fecundity, number of eggs, but also their hatchability coming out of that, the number that we're surviving to hatch.
Mr. England?
I have a question, a curiosity question, I saw on a film up here that the nest, the nest had some oyster shells, that's how y'all find them?
Yeah, you'll, you'll go across and you'll see a depression, which is, which is, I think Steve can attest, is a little difficult when you also have nesting terns and all that going on up there as well. But, but again, it's, you look for a depression, and sometimes you'll even be seeing trails going to those areas. Fairly shallow at that point, and we're seeing in the neighborhood of eight to twelve eggs per nest.
And how, the dynamic of the nest, how large is the nest?
It's far, I mean, it's, it's hard to say, because, because they're nesting in all different kinds of habitats, and they'll kind of find little, little, little areas that they're going to deposit at, but if you're looking for just sort of a circular amount, you know, maybe twelve inches.
Twelve, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Fatta?
Thank you, Dr. Kraft. Just another question of curiosity, is this particular species of turtle, is this endangered, or is this population still viable enough that they're...
It's, it's listed as a species of special concern by Wildlife and Fisheries. It does have other ratings throughout its range. A lot of that, a lot of that rating, which is S3 for the Wildlife Action Plan, was, and it used to be S2, because there was only, again, a hundred observations thereof, and that's the benchmark for them. We're still, we still know very, very limited amounts about them as far as their distribution and abundance, though, you know, as, as we've been finding with the work that we've done this year, I think, I think a lot of that is, is understanding, and understanding how they use the habitat, but then also finding partners to come in to allow us access, to then sample in those same habitats. And that's been, that's been a tremendous benefit for us, is that for the listing of the folks that we have, for all of these various land companies and what have you throughout the state, they've been tremendous collaborators. And to that point, anyone that signs on to gain, you know, for us to access their property, we view as a full collaborator in this project. They get a report of all activities that we do on an annual basis, and anything that we publish, a copy of that goes out before, before anything goes into a peer-reviewed journal.
So, this research will also help you establish whether these, this particular type of turtle would be moved up to endangered, or if it would be special concern, or...
Correct, correct.
Okay, so that'll evaluate, to help you in the evaluation of that?
That would be, I would say that that would be one of, one of the factors that would be utilized.
Okay. And the caging process that you were describing, could you talk about that a little bit more, to cage off the nest, you say, to follow the, what is that, the whole?
Yeah, it's, it's basically what we've done in the past, and it might be a little interesting with oyster shell beaches, but... with oyster shell beaches, but we, we did that on Grand Isle Beach. And you dig a ring around, around the nest, and then you have just a circular hardware cloth that goes on top of it, and it's got a closed over top. But the, and you've got it, you've got the mesh small enough so that they can't get out at that point. But once you set it, you have, you regularly would be sampling that. We only do that on, on areas that are, that are in fairly close proximity to land because of that. We don't want to risk caging them and then...
Because you have to check this quite regularly?
Exactly.
So that once they've hatched and you've done your research, you can let them go so that they can feed and go on?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Warner?
I'll make a motion that we let the Wildlife and Fisheries conduct that study on a Section 16 property.
Motion second by Mr. Egan. Are there any other questions? Okay, Ms. Dosh.
Thank you for the lesson on the terrapin. That's interesting.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned in the beginning of your presentation something about derelict crab traps and how it affects the blue crab. You said something about blue crab?
It's, derelict crab pots, there's a lot of literature principally in the Virginia, Maryland area where there's been a lot more terrapin work than certainly in Louisiana, where they've shown interactions with derelict crab pots and terrapin being caught as bycatch. And, and so Louisiana being the area that has the largest commercial blue crab fisheries at that point, and they're going through and they have an interim listing of sustainable management for that particular species, it's important for them to be answering questions like that. And we've done some work in the last closure to go through and document incidents of bycatch in those areas, and I know that that's an area of further concern that Office of Fisheries has.
Okay. I didn't know, I know the crabs have been not as plentiful as normal, so I didn't know if that, there was any association with turtles and the crabs and, you know, if they affect one another or...
At this point, speaking for Louisiana, we have, we have no data to, other than what we've, what we've done this past year to really talk about that, and it's very temporal.
Okay. And then, as far as your request, how long are you asking for access to the 16th section land? Is it for a year indefinite?
Yeah, we end up customizing our land access agreement to the person that we're doing it with. We have some that were, for as long as we want. We've had some that are yearly renewable, so it really goes to whatever your preference is.
Okay.
And I sent, and I sent sort of a template land access agreement that LDW fiscal, I mean, legal, sorry, I've been dealing with budgets today, I apologize, that legal had written up as, as a, as sort of a conversation starter. But certainly, we've incorporated land access agreements for any host of, any host of folks that we've got.
Okay, and then that legal, is a whole harmless agreement included? And then what about any, like, as far as the traps, would that disturb the marshland at all?
No, ma'am.
Okay, 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 thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Long?
Oh, Ms. Dysot asked my question about the length of the study.
John, as far as the habitat of the turtles, would it be very disruptive to their environment there in whatever you're attempting to do?
No, I don't, I don't think so, because certainly for the areas that we're evaluating, a number of them in St. Bernard, we've seen no indication that it's, that it's been complicating anything.
Okay, would it be an exhaustive study that would include most of the 16th section land? I believe it's six hundred...
Honestly, for where we sit, for your land, as well as others that we, that we talked to, the St. Bernard Tax Assessor on, a lot of it will involve us actually going out and looking at the property to find out if it was, if it is A, there, and B, if it's suitable habitat.
Yeah, yeah, you don't want to get out any deep water.
The main, one of the main reasons that we wanted to, to come here is A, is certainly to let y'all know what we're up to, and, because I think it's very important that we engage the public on everything that we're doing. But, but it's also very important to us that we don't go on anyone's piece of dirt. That's sort of a, that's sort of a big deal for me. And so, we want to engage our potential collaborators right off the bat, let them know exactly what our goals and objectives are, how we go about doing our business, let them know that they're going to be involved in everything that we do from the beginning to end. And that's just how our program does business.
Yeah, Mr. Egan.
Again, with curiosity, with the data that you have in regards to terrapins, what about that wonderful oil spill we had? Do y'all have anything to say what detriment that was to the development of the, you know, the turtle species or, or do you have anything that you can really say was affected?
I, I, because of, because it's still pending litigation, I can't really say anything.
Because I have, I have, not because I'm looking for any litigation or anything. I got twenty-four acres right close to Lake Eugenie.
Was that right?
Yeah, so that's what, anytime y'all need it, please call me.
Well, I'd be, I'd like to get your contact information before I go.
Yeah, you have a place for them to stay there.
I hope it's still there.
John Lee, I've got a car drop.
Okay, Mr. England?
Thank you, Dr. Craft. Mr. Warner, would you be willing to amend your motion to give a term period on this?
Yeah, I was going to ask.
Sure. For about a two-year?
That's fine.
Yeah, renewable each two years.
Two years, and then the Wildlife and Fisheries, y'all can come back to us, a report on it?
Absolutely.
Okay, that'd be great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, this is okay with this person that made the second also.
I have your opposition to that, sir.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to grant permission to the Wildlife and Fisheries Commission for a two-year period for their work. So, any other questions before we ask for the vote? Here, non-voter machines.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, John, Stephen.
Make sure that Shelby has your contact information. Oh, you have? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Agenda item seven is update on construction of the MoMA Center. Mr. Albert Carey, your own.
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
How he has it, yeah.
Changing now.
There it is. Okay, here we go. Okay, good evening, everyone. Here's our construction. We're going to start with the MoMA Center. We've seen this view over and over again. Much, much has changed on the exterior, but a lot has changed on the interior. All of the repairs have been made, and now all the finishes are starting to arrive, all of the products that are going into this building. So, we're now starting to see some major changes on the inside. This is still the sod showing the shed, the garden shed. Here's the cafeteria, all the glass is in. You can see it, it's got a nice big space. Here is the kitchen. We have the quarry tiles in place. Here's the big hood. They just have to put the ceiling in and start moving in the equipment now. We're in the auditorium. All the plaster work is finished around the auditorium, and we'll start terrazzo in there shortly. You can, this is the projection room, the back of the auditorium, that shows the projection booths and the sound and the light booth. You can see they've been repairing all of the freeze work and all of the special architectural details are now ready to be finished. We've been working on that. You remember the windows that were in the building, in the auditorium, side walls, they're getting ready to be put back the way they were. You can see the workers doing all of the plaster work right now. And even one of the fixtures has been put back. All the old fixtures were refurbished and illuminated and the modern lighting put in place. This is the main entrance to the building through the arches, going into the lobby of the planetarium. Those will be terrazzo steps that will go up, similar to the staircase, excuse me, at the Cultural Arts Center, goes up to the second floor. Here's the outside of the planetarium, they're finishing work. All those panels, the metal panels are starting to arrive to finish the outside of the planetarium. And we're inside the planetarium now. You can see the rise is going up to the second level. The, all the duck work is in place now, that will all be spray painted black, and that is on the other side of the big dome that's going to be put in. You won't see any of that duck work, it's all concealed, but it's all ready to go now. Now, we're on the top of the planetarium, looking down where the seats will be. And the dome is on an angle similar to where the seating is, so you don't have to crane your neck to look up and see the show. When you come out of the second level of the planetarium, you go through this space, on this curved wall will be an illuminated LED exhibit of constellations and starfields. There'll all be little lights that will show you the constellations. And you can see, I took this picture so you could see all of the wood. This is all the millwork for the door frames, the windows and all are now, is now here, and will start going in place. That shows you the covered walkway coming from the bus loading area into the new lobby. The new staircase built on the, the north end of the building. And when you look out, you can see the roadwork, the new bus drive is under construction right now. And there'll be a nice fence along the property line with the other houses. We've worked it all out with the neighbors. Here we have one of the typical, this is the second floor exhibit space, and that's a wood floor. You can see all the wood material for the wood floor that's going in there. Almost the entire second floor will be wood to match the original wood. And all the wood used in here, if we didn't have it, it's reclaimed wood from all of the different things we've taken out of this building. We have it all milled down to make the floor. Here you can see the wood floor in place. And all along the exhibit, it says, we call it a Wayne's Cottage, it's going to be a wood paneled system that's going to have all of the power and data for exhibits in it. And that will probably stain dark as well. You can see the wood floors in the upstairs exhibit spaces. And we're going to reuse the transoms that were out on the first floor, that's all going back in. This is one of the classrooms. We have two classrooms in this building. This one will have a, will have cooking demonstrations. That's the hood for the cooking demonstration table that will be underneath it. It's adjacent to the garden, so you'll be able to grow things in the garden and bring them in here, teach the kids how to cook food from the garden. That's the old arched entrance that was there, and we took all the brick out and we made it, so that you can see the frame for it, so that will be going there. And this is the garden shed, which will also have the solar mapping diagram on the ground. There'll be a single hole in that opening you see in the roof, and the sun will track along a path that's already been decided on, and you'll be able to tell which day of the year it is by the location of the dot on the floor. So that's MoMA's. Any questions before, of course, the big question, when's it going to be ready? Probably October. Yeah, it's moving along now. They're going to be turning on the AC shortly, so we can start doing all of the finish work on the inside.
Any questions of Mr. Carey? Okay, Mr. Vanna?
Thank you, Dr. Craft. That's, that's the question I was wondering, I know we hit that on season with cold weather earlier, and now we're in our summer rain season.
But now our work is on, most of our work is on the inside. You know, all the finish work is all undercover and protected, so we can start finishing the inside.
So it'll be finished this year?
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Shamet High School. This is the oak tree courtyard, the old oak that's there, and to the right is the new building that will be turned over. The second floor will be turned over to the school board by July fourteenth, so Mr. Alonso and his crew can finish the floors and move the furniture in, because this will be usable on the first day of school. First, we'll go through, this is the first floor, this is the bandroom, the new bandroom. Probably toward the end of August, it will be turned over. It won't be ready for the beginning of school. We have put a lot of thought into the soundproofing so that we don't have the sound, the music going up into the classrooms. There's all kinds of levels of insulation in here. What you're looking at is the entrance all the way to the left, well, the middle, you see the entrance to the new lobby. So that's how you'll get into that building. There's a big roll-up door to the left, and the other doors are office space. On the other wall, the Palmasano Street side, this is all the instrument storage closets. Here's the outside of that building. Now, this will be the entrance to the shop, industrial arts. It will have its own yard, storage yard, and you'll be able to move things into the building through garage doors. So here is the interior of the shop. It has a big classroom as well as all of the, the storage rooms, offices, and things to make it work. We have all the layouts of the equipment, and once the ceiling is put in, there'll be another ceiling, then the dust collection system will go in. So we'll have a state-of-the-art dust collection system. Okay, so now we're going to be entering the, the building from the second floor lobby. You can see it's already open, the air conditioning is on and everything, and the new classroom wing. So this is the hallway of the new classroom wing. The lockers are in place now. All it really needs is the ceiling and polish the floors. Here's a typical classroom. The millwork is all in there. The only thing we need now are the doors and the VCT flooring and the ceiling panels, but they're all ready to go. Like I said, this will all be turned over in the middle of July, so that'll be ready for the start of school. This will be nine new classrooms. We have a new stairwell in there, and that will be ready also. Now we're in that hallway along Judge Perez that connects all the, this new building to the old classroom building. So you'll be able to go undercover inside throughout all of Shamet High School. You're looking at the roof over the new administration office. And now you see the curved, the arched sort of atrium area. There'll all be glass on the left. You can also on the right, you see the old glass that will, that's all coming out, and that will be the entrance to the corridor of the, of the original building. So all of this will all be connected at this point. The, there's like an atrium effect in the entrance to the building. You will still come in the same door, same entrance way as you were before, but at the back of this arch, you'll, there'll be a glass wall that will stop anyone from coming further than this. You'll not be able to come into the building without going into the office first and checking in. You'll be definitely, you'll definitely be stopped before you go in. So there won't be, the days of roaming around Shamet High School and Will will be over, really. So we're in the office, this is looking down at some of the spaces. The tall space is, this is, this will be the principal's office with the high windows, and it'll have windows out onto the street as well. It just, this will be the outside wall, and the other part is the porch that we, that we had before, but it will have the brick outlines and all in it. This is the other courtyard. It's an enclosed courtyard, and it will be used, I mean, it will be available for... It's an enclosed courtyard and it will be used, I mean, it will be available for students for, for teaching or outdoor space. And it's totally protected. You can't, you know, you can't, no one can get access into this courtyard without having to be in the school first. So this is what was once home economics and it's going back to that, but it's being totally redone. We're moving the grease trap out of the building into the courtyard and they're getting ready to put the hood. The hood is stacked up in the far part of the building, but it's ready to go in for the, for cooking. This is the, what was once the social, I mean, what was once the counselor's area is now going to be social workers. So that's where this is all being redone for the social work area of the building. Counselors are moving to where Mr. Warner's office is now. That will now be the new counselor area. It'll be twice the size of this, so there'll be a lot more room for, for kids to wait and see counselors. Now, we're in the digital library on the second floor. This is where the old math department was. And this new library will hold 62 computer stations. And it will take the place of the library. It'll be connected digitally to the library across the street. And the window you see at the left-hand side, that looks into the room where all of the Kindles or whatever tablets that are going to be used and be stored and there'll be banks of electrical outlets so they all can be recharged at the same time. And what you're looking through the window on the right into the corridor that's across from the studio. So all of that will be one big area now. So this is the new hallway. It used to be the math hallway. We took down all the sheet rock and it's all the glazed tile walls and new doors. So all this will be classrooms now. There'll be five classrooms in this area, plus the digital library, plus the green room for the, the old theater. This is the computer business area. It's all being redone right now. So for the opening of school, these classes will move into the new building that showed while this work is being done. And on the outside, we're going to make, we're replicating what was done on the football field house across the way. The wall will curve under the final column so it won't be so tight for students to walk. You can see there's not much room to walk. So we're opening it up more so it'll make a better entrance, place for the kids to move around. So that's it for right now.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. We appreciate that report, that very, very thorough. Any questions of Mr. Carey before we?
I do, Dr.
Okay. Ms. Dasart?
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Both projects are exciting.
Yeah, they are.
It's going to be such a, a great access to, for our students and our teachers. I have a question on Shamet High. The business department, you said, is going to move over to the new classrooms.
Temporarily while they're redoing the, the business area.
Okay. Well, what is the completion date for the business?
Well, they're going to try and get them in in September. That's what they're hoping for.
Okay. So the entire project will be finished by?
No, no. The entire project won't be finished until the beginning of 2015.
Okay.
The last thing that will be done, once the administration area is finished in October, the administrative staff will move into there and that will leave that last side of the wing where the office is now and the science table, science labs are above it. That'll be the last piece to be done. We didn't want to move the administration twice, so we waited so that they could move in and get settled and then we can rip off that next, that old section. Not rip off, but totally redo it.
So you, you said October. Would that be the beginning of October or end of October?
I would think Halloween.
Halloween, okay.
That sounds like the end.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the update.
Anyone else have questions of Mr. Carey? Thank you for that, Mr. Carey. Who's handling item eight? Subaltern Bochy, Mr. Carey? Okay, so you're still on item eight there, Mr. Carey? About the parking lot at Davies?
Yeah, we have the parking lot, tabulation bids for the MOMAS, I mean, for the Davies parking lot. We had two bidders and the low bidder was Pico Fidella, who was a St. Bernard contractor. And we had him check his bid and he said he can do it for the amount we're doing. So I, I recommend we award the contract to Pico Fidella and take the two alternates. The two alternates were additional paving in the existing parking lots that FEMA deemed we could, we could do. So the budget now, I mean, we, the total amount would be $199,690, which was a little bit under FEMA's estimate.
I move that we accept the low bid.
We have a motion by Mr. Dasart, second by Dr. Lewis. Any, any questions relative to the bid tabulation? Or Mr. Long?
Pico Fidella, Mr. Carey, they've done work for us before.
Yeah, they've done concrete work for us before too.
Okay. And they've always done, done?
Yes, and you know, I had them check their bid to make sure they covered everything and all that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. England?
Yeah. Mr. Carey, what's the completion date on that?
It has to be ready for the start of school.
Right, that's what I was trying to get at. Make sure that it is completed.
Right. School, summer school ends Friday, so we can start right away and tear out that driveway in the front. That's basically the big part of this and have that ready for the start of school for the bus drive.
Because I know they're serving meals over there, you know, at Davies, you know, during the summertime. That's not going to have any effect on a?
No, because we're going to be doing that very front. And once, we were worried about summer school, but now that that's ending Friday, we can have the whole front to do it. They can still get in to the school by the cafeteria and on the other side by the, what is it, preschool area.
Preschool area, right. Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Here in none, we have a motion and a second on the board to accept PQ Fidella on the bids. So vote your machines.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Appreciate it. Okay, item nine is personnel changes for the month of June. Mr. Granberry?
Good evening. Some information for you. You will notice that there are more yellow lines on the resignations than there are on the appointments, which means we're getting a little bit behind.
Okay. A little more work to do.
Oh, yes.
Yes, Ms. Dasart?
Thank you, Mr. Granberry. I just want to mention our retiree, Charlotte Main. We're going to really miss you, Charlotte. And she's done an excellent job at the Ninth Grade Academy and, and as a math teacher at Shamet High School for many, many years. And I just want to wish you a happy retirement and to say, you know, thank you for all of your service to the students in St. Bernard Parish and you will definitely be missed. And enjoy your time with your grandchildren.
Okay, Subaltern Bochy?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo that because I'm, I'm beginning to sound like, I think, Mr. Campbell now. When, I didn't teach her, but when she was a brand-new teacher, I was the chairman of the math department at Shamet and Charlotte came on as a young math teacher. That was before she had children, before she had her family. So, you know, I've worked with her many, many, many years. And then from that point, she moved to the central office where she was curriculum coordinator and then moved to St. Bernard High School as an assistant principal prior to Katrina, at which point we consolidated. And she's been an invaluable resource. She's been the site administrator at the Ninth Grade Academy, which has done extremely well. And I can't believe she has grandchildren at this point, but she does. And after a very long and distinguished career, she wants to spend time, more time with her family and her grandchildren. So we definitely support her in that endeavor and she surely will be missed. But as we do with many of our retirees, she need, we need to make sure she comes back on a volunteer basis and help out. And I'm certain that she will.
Thank you. Yes, she will be sorely missed. She did an outstanding job at the Shamet Academy. Anyone else? Okay. Anything else you have? Forrest, Mr. Granberry? That's it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Item 10 on the agenda, motion to approve the administration's recommendation for the renewal of excess workers' compensation insurance. And there was a recommendation by the committee. Mr. Harson is around if anyone has any questions relative to this. You have that?
Motion, Dr. Crap.
I got a motion by Mr., oh. Okay, and Mr. Campbell, second. All righty. Any, any questions now? They, they're anxious to answer any questions. Here in none, vote your machines on item nine. I mean, item 10.
Motion passes 11-0.
Okay, thank you. Item 11, motion to approve the administration's recommendation for official general, and it was a recommendation by the committee?
Second.
Second by Mr., I mean, motion by Mr. Campbell, second by Dr. Lewis. Any, any questions relative to this? Here in none, vote your machines.
Motion passes 11-0.
Okay, item 12, and there was a recommendation by the committee, motion to approve the administration's recommendation for vehicle painting and body repairs.
I move that we accept the low bid.
Ms. Dasart made recommendations, second by Mr. Nicosia. Any questions before we go to the vote? Okay, here in none, vote your machines.
Motion passes 11-0.
Item 13, on the agenda was motion to approve the administration's recommendation for gasoline, diesel, lubricating oil, transmission fluid and antifreeze. And there was a recommendation by the, by the committee. Dr. Lewis motions to accept this, second by Mr. Long. Any, any questions before we go to the vote? Here in none, vote your machines.
Motion passes 11-0.
Item 14 is a motion to approve the administration's recommendation for substitute management services. And there was a recommendation by the committee. Do we have a motion relative to this or any questions? Motion or a question? Motion by Mr. Warner, second by Mr. Nicosia. Okay, any other questions before we go to the vote? Here in none, vote your machines.
Motion passes 11-0.
Item 15, Superintendent Bochy, would you give us the information on the appointment of the Shamet High School assistant principal?
We, as we just mentioned, Ms. Main is retiring, so we want to name a replacement for the assistant principal at Shamet High School. There were five very well-qualified applicants. Those applicants were interviewed by the principal, Mr. Warner, the assistant principal, Ms. Mont, and our supervisor of middle and high schools, Mary Lumetta. And that three-member team interviewed each of the applicants extensively with a writing component as well. And their recommendation, their unanimous recommendation would be Kelly Watson to be named the new assistant principal at Shamet High School. It's always nice. Ms. Watson is homegrown. She went through our school system, graduate of our high school. I think she was valedictorian at the point. Extremely talented young lady, has come back to teach with us and you can see her many activities. She is, has also been instrumental in the project Lead the Way, that new engineering program as well. And if you, and in our Data Fest, she serves as a tremendous resource at the school in terms of all the accountability measures that we have in place and the tracking of the data. She is involved in all of the activities, as you can well see from the little insert that we have here. I think she is just a hard-working and dedicated young lady who has given of her time and her extensive expertise. So with that unanimous recommendation from the committee, I would recommend to the board the appointment of Kelly Watson as the assistant principal of Shamet High School.
Yes.
I also move that we approve the recommendation of the superintendent and the committee.
All right, so the appointment of Shamet High School assistant principal.
Kelly Watson.
Kelly Watson, who else? Second, second by Mr. England.
And I just, I would like to say that, looking at the list of applicants, we had five very, very good applicants. All very excellent, you know, teachers and educators. So it was the unanimous decision of the committee, but we appreciate everyone who did apply and we hope that they continue to apply for administrative positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dasart. Any questions or statements by the board before we call the vote? Here in none, vote your machines.
Motion passes 11-0.
Okay, next is the appointment of the director of the MOMAS Center, Planetarium Mayor.
Okay, this was?
Subaltern Bochy?
This was another very talented field of applicants that you can see the seven or eight applicants that we have listed here. Tremendous teachers and, teachers and coaches within our school system. Ms. Larson and I did the interviews because it's going to be a very important position as the MOMAS Center coordinator, MOMAS Center director. And it is our recommendation that we appoint Ms. Gina Aceveda. Ms. Aceveda has been with our school system for 12 years. She's taught middle school science at Shamet Middle, then the Unified School, then at Trist Middle School. She has a master's degree in curriculum and instruction and she's working on her PhD, which she will achieve very soon. She has been involved extensively in curriculum writing for science for us district-wide. You can see all the activities that she has been involved in. She has been studying the next-generation science standards and is well-versed in those as well. And, you know, we talk about the Praxis test a lot, which is something that teachers have to pass to demonstrate mastery in the content area. And she has been a member of the standard-setting committee for the Praxis Middle School Science Test. So she is extremely talented and her background speaks for itself. She's very knowledgeable in the science areas, has done the curriculum writing. Her students have worked on many, many projects. She's taken them out on the Mississippi River to do different types of research. So we think that she's a perfect fit for the MOMAS Center in terms of developing the exhibits and the activities and working with our teachers district-wide on these science exhibits and initiatives.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes. It'd be my privilege to acknowledge and to recommend to the full board Gina Aceveda as the new director, the director of the MOMAS Center.
Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Dasart? Okay. Any questions? Any statements?
Yes.
Did you teach?
I have a statement.
Yes.
Again, as Ms. Bochy said, we had many wonderful applicants and we're so happy that Ms. Aceveda will be the new director. She will do a fabulous job, I'm sure. But I do hate to see her leave Trist as an academic games coach.
Yes.
We'll be losing her there, but we'll be gaining her in a much more, greater position at the MOMAS Center. Hopefully she'll pass on her knowledge there as an academic games coach to someone else and we'll get someone just as, as wonderful as she was with the students for academic games. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Let me ask, Subaltern Bochy? Let me ask Subaltern Boachy, relative to planetarium information, I guess, with a background in science, she's had some background in this, is that right?
In the planetarium?
Right.
And we're going to be sending her, that's one of the reasons that we're trying to appoint now, there's going to be training for the planetarium that we're going to be sending her to at the end of July.
Okay. That's on the equipment that's there?
It's on the equipment, the software and programmatically, so we're going to be sending her.
The company that developed it.
Right, to the company itself.
Okay.
For training.
Okay, we have a?
Dr. Griffith, again, we had seven really qualified individuals who applied for this position, and it's great to see so many applicants.
We were quite impressed as we did the interviews, so we are looking for many of these people that continue to apply for positions in the future, because I think we have a talented pool from which to draw.
Anyone else before we call the vote? All right, vote your machines.
Motion passes eleven zero.
All right. Any thing else, Subaltern, on your recommendations?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everyone, we are ending our summer skills program at the middle, elementary and high school this week, and students who needed to are retaking the LEAP assessments in fourth and eighth grade and some end-of-course testing at the middle school. So hopefully, that will be successfully completed on Friday. Also, in your flyer, as a reminder, Mr. Kassar has asked me again to remind everyone of the performance this coming weekend, beginning Thursday night. Be Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night at seven, and a Sunday matinee at two, of the performance of Anything Goes. And from what I understand and what I hear, it's spectacular. So hopefully, everyone will be able to make it to one of these performances. And I think, lastly, I know there's been a lot of discussion in the media and at the state level and the local levels concerning our Common Core state standards and the potential administration of the PARC assessment. And recently, our governor has come out in opposition to this, and there is an ongoing controversy at the state level in terms of what assessment we will be administering this school year. We have sent out a communication to all of our teachers and to the community as well that we, as a school system, and you as a school board, as you have said many times, are in favor of high standards, rigorous standards for students. And those high expectations, our students are meeting them time and time again. So we're not afraid of higher standards, and we support them. We also support assessments that will measure those particular standards, whatever they may be. We think that it is very confusing to students, to teachers, to parents, and to community members that we're having this type of controversy with only about five or six weeks left before we reopen school. So we don't want to throw anything into a turmoil, not only within our local community and as well as statewide. Today, the governing body, the Executive Board of Superintendents, which was composed of our officers and our regional chairs, met in conjunction with the leadership of the School Board Association. I know Dr. Craft is on that leadership group, Ms. Daisart has been on it in the past as well. So our two leadership groups met this morning, and we issued a press release that went out today, this afternoon, and I'd like to read it to everyone so that our community would understand the positions that we are taking. And it says, "The Louisiana School Board Association and the Louisiana Association of School Superintendents assure students, parents, teachers, administrators, and communities that local school system leaders will provide for a high-quality public education experience when schools open in August, despite ongoing disputes at the state level regarding standards and assessments. LSBA and LASS have consistently advocated for higher standards for Louisiana students in order to prepare them for college and career readiness. Local school districts will continue to provide professional development and appropriate resources for our educators to ensure the highest quality education possible for our students. Further, school districts will continue to work toward enhancing technology integration into all facets of learning so that all Louisiana students are well-prepared for the 21st century workforce. With the opening of the 2014-15 school year quickly approaching, both LSBA, the Louisiana School Board Association, and the Louisiana Association of School Superintendents advocate for a prompt resolution to the ongoing disputes at the state level. In the event that no resolution prior to the opening of school is reached, LSBA and LASS recommend that the 2013-14 assessment practices remain in place for 2014-15 school year to ensure continuity and consistency for all stakeholders. LSBA and LASS will continue to provide leadership for our communities and strive for the best possible education for our students." So the stance that we are taking as organizations at this time is to implore our leadership at the state level to come to some resolution prior to the opening of school, so that our students, our parents, and our teachers and our communities know the direction that we're headed into. And if they can come to none at that time, that we keep the current standards and the current assessments in place until that resolution is reached.
That sounds the way it should be, because this is something we're accustomed to finishing up this year, and with this rug pulled alpha under, the other plans, this is about the only logical thing that we can do as a school system, so I fully support that. That is very well-written, and I know a lot of time and effort went into that in making this decision. So representatives are representing as well on the School Board Association and also the Louisiana School Superintendent Association. And we congratulate you in your leadership role there, and you couldn't be at a better position at a better time.
I don't know.
I know it will be challenging, but, hey, that's why we need a good person, a person that's logical and can provide the leadership needed to move this state forward.
Well, I think we have to recognize that there are many differences of opinion statewide concerning the standards and assessments. But I don't think that we can put our children's education in the middle of this type of a controversy.
No.
So that once school starts, our teachers and our students and parents and families and communities have to know what it is, what standards we're using, and what assessment will be used to assess those particular standards. Anything else is less than what we all deserve. So we're hoping that the leadership of our state comes to that consensus so that we can begin the school year on a positive note. And if not, we're asking that our current standards and assessments, which are higher standards and Common Core-aligned assessments that we took this past spring, that they remain in place and of the rigor that we have developed.
Anything else from any board members before we call for adjournment? All right, all move adjourns? Okay, all in favor, say aye. We stand adjourned. Have a good day.